Good afternoon, everyone. I think we can get going. Kevin, are you good to go?
All set.
Perfect. So I would like to remind everyone, as always, that our web meetings are web trained and televised. And for those in attendance, if you could please ensure your phones are on silent mode. We will begin today with the Board of Health meeting and then public hearings will begin at 3:00 PM. And with that, I will call the Board of Health to order. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor? And that's carried. Any declarations of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none. Shankar, I believe you're up first. Welcome, and I will turn it over to you for the update.
Dr. Shankar, you're on mute.
All right, I think I'm off mute now. Is that right? I think I'm off.
You're off mute, yes.
I'm off mute. Am I on mute now? I think I'm off.
You're good, Shankar.
Okay, good. All right. Thanks, Kevin. Members of the Board of Health, Madam Chair, thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I think I wanted to share some key points with you today related to where we are in the pandemic. So COVID-19 has had a significant impact on our community. And the role of the public health service is to try to manage the competing risk that we have to serve the 110,000 people. At the current time, we have approximately 2,000 cases since the pandemic. We've had 250 active cases. We're getting about 20 cases per day. We've had 28 outbreaks in agricultural enterprises. We have eight non-farm outbreaks. And these are both in this calendar year since January. We've had 41 deaths. We have people living both in these deaths and people living in the community as well as in long-term care and retirement homes. We have both younger people, notable people dying. Since the beginning of the pandemic, approximately 80 people have been hospitalized. At the current time, there's five people who are hospitalized and three of those people are in the intensive care unit. So just by the basic raw epidemiology, COVID-19 has had a big impact on people. It's also had a big impact on hospitals and it affects the people beyond COVID-19. Across the province, about two-thirds of all intensive care unit beds, I can look at the numbers, the most recent numbers, it's about 60%, sorry, that are currently being filled by people who have COVID-19. What does that mean? It means it's crowding out other important clinical services. In our local area, operating theater services have been curtailed. Many scheduled procedures have been canceled. ICU occupancy, the numbers I got this morning at the Norfolk General Hospital are 89%. Occupancy across the hospitals altogether and all beds, about 70%. So overall, COVID-19 has impacted the hospitals. And the reason I say this is that one of our challenges is to manage outbreaks or minimize the chances of outbreaks in congregate settings. One large outbreak could ultimately saturate hospital resources. And under the current climate, these are challenges that we face province-wide. Big teaching hospitals are also saturated with cases. The statute requires us to make assessments of risk and to think of risk in the provincial level and also what our current risks are at a local level. So we have three fundamental goals. One is case and contact management. That is the foundation of trying to effectuate containment. And at this point, we've had to curtail case and contact management because we just don't have enough people to do everything that we want to do. The second is to try to manage outbreaks at congregate settings. And we have local challenges that are unique. In this health district, there are more, there are 600 bunkhouses. There are more migrant farm workers per capita than any other district in the province. The only district that has more in absolute terms is Windsor and has three times as many staff. We also have challenges with shortages of or not enough staff to do case and contact management. As I said, that's both frontline staff and management staff. And we have experience with risk. You know, I was chatting with the epidemiologist before we met today. You know, and I want to share this with you is that the last, I recall, the biggest outbreak that we had ultimately had about 200 workers who got COVID, they had 18 hospital visits, we had 12 hospitalizations, seven ICU admissions, two people on a ventilator, and one had died. There are some farms that have 500 and 600 people, or there are farms that have 500 and 600 people. So we have to think about what could that mean in a stressed and saturated healthcare system? We've learned from what we've learned in 2020 to try to help us manage other congregate settings. And we've had outbreaks in other congregate settings, including group homes, retirement homes, long-term care facilities. I want to share with you what we know from the last big outbreak at the farm. First thing is, is that an outbreak at the farm does not include the people or can spread beyond the people who live on the farm, but beyond the farm community. Outbreaks on large agriculture enterprises can affect multiple sites of service and just not one site of service. We have evidence in the past that communal activities in the post-isolation period, such as a soccer game, access to free Wi-Fi, probably contributed to spread of COVID-19. And that is one reason we really try to effectuate cohorting of staff. There were breaches in the self-isolation period. And we know that with our investigation. We also know that there were people who were sick during the self-isolation period who were not identified. Now, that's probably a multifactorial challenge. One is there are incentives or there are constructs that make people reluctant to disclose. There's also the fact that the people that we serve don't always speak English. And so the challenges with translation and communication. The economic incentives sometimes favor people not to disclose. That's just not in farms. We're seeing that in other outbreaks as well. So one of the things that we have had to do is to learn from our own experience in Harlem and Norfolk and try to factuate plans moving forward. We've done okay with vaccine, and I want to shift to vaccine. We vaccinated approximately 40,000 people in the health district. The vaccine prevents people from getting sick. So the more people that we can vaccinate, the better. And we have vaccinated people at community vaccination centers through physicians' offices. In fact, at the hospital, I think vaccination is a success in the health district to the extent that it demonstrates that people can cooperate. The hospital, I think, has done an extraordinary job in expanding vaccine services. I think the Delhak Family Health Team has done an extraordinary job. I think the two family health teams and the physicians in the district and many other people have really stepped up to the plate to vaccinate people. At the current time, the people eligible to register for vaccine include people over 50, agricultural workers, including farm operators and owners, migrant farm workers, food service workers, workers in manufacturing, people working in law enforcement and other regulatory tasks, childcare workers, schoolteachers, funeral home workers, so the long list. But one of the challenges is, is that just because one is eligible to register for vaccine doesn't mean that you'll necessarily get the vaccine in the most immediate course. So the rate-limiting step for vaccine now is actually delivery of vaccine, the allocation and delivery of vaccine. We got some extra supply of vaccine this week. I expect that we'll get thousands of doses of vaccine over the next month. But at the end of the day, it's probably, it's probably going to be till the end of the summer until we can get everyone we want to get vaccinated or offer vaccine to everyone who would benefit from vaccine. If we look at the resources, you know, I started this talk about managing risk within the resources we have. And we have three fundamental priorities. One is case and contact management. Secondly, reducing and managing risk at congregate settings. And thirdly, is a vaccine program. And we have less than 100 staff who work, or approximately 100 staff who work at the health unit. And we have to use those human resources well to effectuate all those programs. Now, the county has provided additional resources and that has helped. But as we move forward, we want to be able to try our very best to address priorities in each of those areas. In closing, and I'm happy to answer any questions, in closing, the public health service is an apolitical enterprise. Its goal is to try to manage risk and mitigate risk as best as we can within the resources that we have. Some of the decisions we have to make are not popular. They don't meet the test of necessarily what is considered the most popular course of action. We do accept that. The other item that I want to share with you is that many times the decisions we make at the public health service are based on a more fulsome data set and knowledge that we can't always disclose publicly. That goes for individual cases, that goes for clusters of cases, that goes for outbreaks, and that goes for large outbreaks. And that's a challenge that we have as we move forward. I'm always an optimist, and I think that that my hope is by the fall that we'll return to a better sense of normalcy. If I could share with you, my own personal reflection is, is that these last 15 months or so, since these cases came on board and COVID has become part of our reality, is that it's time lost. It's time lost for us in our professional lives, it's time lost in our business lives. People have put off many important things such as weddings. It's funerals have been limited to a number of people. People can't travel. But I think the biggest loss is really the loss of family relations. Be those sad times where you can't go visit a loved one in the hospital when they're sick or the fact that you can't visit your children who might live somewhere far from you. So given all of that, I am hopeful that as we move forward into this fall that ultimately we'll have a better control of the situation and we'll return to a more, a higher level of normalcy. Madam Chair, members of the Board of Health, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shankar. Questions from the Board? Counselor, or Board Member Vanpassen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask the doctor, could you explain a little better why things like golf courses and marinas are not allowed to operate under the current rules from the province?
Yeah, you know, Counselor, Board of Health Member, Mr. Vanpassen, it's, as a purely procedural matter, it's not the local health unit that promulgates many of these rules. And on occasion, on occasion, without commenting any specific rule, it's inexplicable to me. But as a general construct, as a general construct, it is not only the underlying activity that one has to consider risk, it's all the associated activities with that. So if one were to go to a recreational event, it's just not the individual recreational event. It's the fact that one got, and let's just use the example that you came from Toronto. Could be Brampton, could be Peel, could be anywhere. If you get up in the morning and leave your house and go to the gas station and then go to the corner store and then get in the car and fill up your tank again and then come, stop at the flower shop and then go to an event or go to a grocery store and then go to an event. It's all of those human-to-human interactions are additional risk for transmitting COVID-19. Now, are each one of those manageable risks? Sure, they are. I think they are. But in the aggregate, that is a collectively increase in risk. And if everybody increases that risk, then the amount of risk is increased for the community overall. So it's a hard thing to necessarily articulate is that it's just not the individual activity alone. But it's the individual activity, all the activities associated with that, and multiply that by the aggregate number of people who are performing that activity, and that helps modulate risk. And that is the reason we give this direction or the province has given this direction for people to stay at home. And so I hope that provides some additional clarity, Board of Health Member.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Member Columbus, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Nesteri, it's been about a year now that I first informed the Board of Health about the Section 22 order that was applied with respect to the three-person-per-bunkhouse ruling. And I know in other jurisdictions, the farmers are telling me there's British Columbia, Prince of Rhode Island, and Nova Scotia have implemented the situation where the province of Ontario takes over the 14-day quarantine on the farms. Have you had any more feedback from the province of Ontario as to where they're at with this whole proposal?
Well, Board of Health Member Columbus, thank you for the question. And I know we've spoken about this before. In September of 2020, our health district wrote to the Prime Minister, wrote to federal officials and asked federal officials to take over the self-isolation period for a whole variety of reasons, including the fact that we thought that the resources of federal government would be more robust than the resources of the local health district because we felt that it also was more likely to lead to effective self-isolation programs. It was consistent with fairness and equity to the extent that the federal government managed the self-isolation program for people returning from China and cruise ships. And we followed that up with numerous correspondences. And I, and we have written to and communicated with provincial officials and federal officials. I had a meeting with a number of senior federal officials. Five other medical officers of health asked the government also to do, to take over the self-isolation period. This is a public document, and they're from adjacent districts, districts that have many This is a public document and they're from adjacent districts, districts that have many migrant farm workers. Notwithstanding notwithstanding those advocacy positions, um, uh, the uh federal and provincial government have not effectuated a plan to take over the self-isolation period. And that leaves the local health district to do its best to try to manage that. Now, British Columbia, to my knowledge, requires, uh, British Columbia does uh uh require people to isolate in a hotel. And my understanding is British Columbia, at least reading the public documents, um, also um requires people to go to a hotel and isolate alone. And in Niagara, I think my colleague there uh sent an advisory require uh requesting the people self-isolate alone in hotels as well. And I and I can try to find you that document uh as well. But um am I optimistic for this season that the federal or provincial government will take over this responsibility? Um, as much as I would hope that they would, um, I'm not sure that they will. I and um, I think that the the majority of workers will likely be here by the end of May. Um, and then it becomes not moved but less of a public health uh uh becomes um as not as significant a public health approach as when people were n- not here at all. Now, as a counterbail or at least as a some balancing factor to that is is that we have uh advocated for the vaccination of uh of workers when they arrive at the airport. And that has been effectuated at this point. Uh, it's my understanding that they that workers are now offered vaccine when they arrive at the airport. And the health district has also allocated vaccine and program. And I think uh just in preparation for today's meeting, I'm just looking at my notes. I think a bit more than thirteen hundred workers have been vaccinated by the health district as well. So given that, I'm optimistic that um um that will have a positive impact on the health of workers. And as a byproduct with healthy people, we also have a healthy commercial enterprise. And hopefully that'll keep agricultural enterprises at a lower risk for uh um having sick workers and as well as uh continuing to minimize the disruption uh to those enterprises. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Columbus.
Thank you for your comments, Doctor. I just wanted to add that uh the the mental anguish that our growers are going through experiencing. I I've heard from several in the last few weeks, not only with the Section twenty-two order, but the federal federal inspections and all that, just a repeat of what maybe even worse what was happening this spring. And you know, the crops are starting to come on. There's there's going to be irreparable damage to the fruit and vegetable industry. I've had a lot of people tell me they just can't cope with it. Their over their their wives who are looking after mostly HR issues are just having a very, very difficult time. And uh, they actually need some help mentally too, thanks.
So if I could just add, Mr. Columbus, it's it's clear that COVID nineteen has affected every single person, every single family, every business, every institution, every school in this health district and across the province. And and we recognize that there's anguish among people who own and operate agricultural enterprises. There's also anguish among the people who get sick, anguish among healthcare workers who have to face, you know, COVID nineteen cases uh on a regular basis. Um, and so I think we're all in this uh uh and we're all in this struggle, if I could use that word, struggle together uh to try to keep our families and our businesses and our institutions uh um uh 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 functioning. You know, um, if I could share that uh when we think of what children and young people have lost in this past eighteen months with virtual learning or the interruptions to school and um um the the loss of their social life, loss of social milestones, losses, not going to prom, um, uh graduations being canceled. So it's it's clearly, uh, you know, it's a clearly multifaceted problem that we that we face as a society and and culture.
Uh, Member Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Top through you, uh, to Dr. Nissari, two questions. The first, uh, I just wondered very quickly if you had noticed any mentionable changes uh through positive COVID cases in our health district now that we are not contact tracing?
Well, I think that um we won't. You know, I I I think the question you're asking, uh, Board of Health Member Martin, is um what do we know of the consequences of not doing contact tracing? And I think it's too early to tell, um, um, you know, and to have quantitative data um uh uh on the uh on this. Like a lot of things, you know, the basics of public health is be that one has uh uh a sexually transmitted infection or tuberculosis or any type of communicable disease that you want to identify the people that have been exposed to that communicable disease and to get them the proper treatment. And in the case of COVID nineteen, the proper treatment is actually merely containment and self-isolation and testing. So I don't think that we'll have quantitative data on this um 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 in the in the near term. I think that we have to make our best judgments and inferences based on our experience with other disease states. Um, you know, I and I I could talk to you privately about trying to use ecological data to make inferences of that nature, but I'm um I I'm reluctant to, I I'm reluctant to say to say that. Needless to say, I'm I'm personally very concerned about containment, but I I don't think that we can make quantitative assessments at at this point. If we had to make quantitative assessments, we'd have to model it and we'd need the resources to model that.
Sure, no, understood. Thank you. My second question, um, after hearing a provincial announcement that, you know, by May two four, they're hoping eighteen year olds and up will be able to go and register for vaccinations. And I I agree with you. I think the team and Chief Page, everyone working on it, uh, is doing a phenomenal job. So my question to you is, it's a bit of a loaded question, but through all of your meetings with other medical officers of health, dialogue with the provincial government, federal government, is there any type of model that's being discussed for life after vaccination? You know, when we look towards the end of the summer, um, what types of things can we, you know, be looking forward to? Certainly, I guess the point I'm trying to get at and start to discuss with people is it's not going to be like ripping off a Band-Aid and because we're vaccinated, life resumes, you know, back to normal overnight. Is there anything that you are aware of or hearing that would kind of demonstrate some type of model for life after vaccination and and what we could look towards or too soon to say?
Well, I'm sure there are people working at least contemplating what the model would be when you reach a certain percentage of vaccination. I could share my own perspective, which is that um, first of all, COVID is a new disease. We don't have lots of uh data on this and uh I think that it's likely. So if you take a hundred people and you vaccinate them, the vast majority of people, let's just argue and say, say ninety percent, uh, if exposed, are not going to get sick. So that's one benefit of vaccinating a large community of people, that if you're actually a large community of people, the vast majority will not get sick. And if they don't get sick, they won't burden the hospital, emergency department, they won't get admitted to the hospital, they won't go to the ICU. But what that also means is that there are a million people that are uh vaccinated. Uh, and if there's a five percent group that's still uh likely to get sick even when you get vaccinated, that's still fifty thousand people looking percent. So I I think that there's always going to be some background of people who will be susceptible to any communicable disease. But the burden will be probably less, that's one issue. Secondly, will we see other variants of COVID nineteen that are not vaccine sensitive or not likely to benefit from vaccination as it's currently configured? Um, I think that's quite a possibility. And then it's like the flu, we'd have to re-vaccinate people every year. So that's something to think about. So moving forward, will there be people who still get COVID nineteen even when you have a high level of vaccine vaccination? Yes. Will people develop new variants of COVID nineteen that are perhaps not vaccine sensitive? I think that's probably yes. Will we still need to make uh continue with public health measures like wearing a mask when you go uh to the grocery store? I think that's probably, at least my guess, is likely to be a yes. Will people uh, and again, these are just personal observations. Um, and and Madam Chair, if you want to cut me off because I'm eating up too much time, you could do that. But uh uh, will we enjoy going to a restaurant in the same way that we did before COVID nineteen? Uh, I'm not sure because uh dining is a risky event when you have your mask on. So um uh, will that be a, will that be a change in culture? Uh, I think that'll be like a a a likely change in how we view going out and interacting with other people. And we might be more cautious about those kind of uh a- activities. Uh, so that's the stuff that I see in the post-COVID era. I think that uh if I could talk of the broader culture, people working from home, I think that's more likely to be embraced as a culture. It could be good, that could be not so good. So uh, I think there's going to be these more cataclysmic changes in our culture moving forward.
Thank you.
Um, it's sorry, uh, Member Rabbits, I don't mean to put you on the the spot at all with this one. It's not uh to yourself, but um to Shanker, there was an email that was, or I shouldn't say a an email, a social media post um that was circulated all over social media about six days ago. Um, and specifically was a letter to Crystal Chop and Council regarding COVID nineteen treatment of businesses versus farms in the Hallam Norfolk Health Unit jurisdiction. So I'll just read it to you, it's very short. Dear Mayor Chop and Council, as you're very aware, there's been a sizable outbreak of Co- of COVID at Toietetsoo and Simcoe. Currently, there are ten people that are known to be infected. I have a couple of profoundly serious concerns. I am reading in the comment sections on social media that the company knew about these infections a week ago and continued to be operational. With the variants in circulation right now, I sincerely hope for our rural area and small hospital that this is not true. I also hope, really hope, that if this is true, our health unit did not know anything about these infections and allow this company to stay open. We do know if this had been a farm, an outbreak would have had drastic consequences immediately. We, the public, need you, our council and health unit board members, to let the public know that you were that you were keeping us safe and secure since the second you discovered an outbreak at Toietetsoo. So I just, part of me wants to make it clear that the health board is not involved in operations and we would not have been aware of these types of things going on or do we monitor um those issues? So I don't know if you might be able to just provide, it was pretty widely circulated. So if you might be able to provide some comments on it?
Sure. So even before COVID, um, um, the health, first of all, um, the public health service tries to work in the background. That's always been our goal. And I think before COVID, uh, uh, the average person probably didn't uh have much interaction with the public health service and probably was not a uh uh it was it was not something that was at the forefront of people's awareness. But many times, um, um, the public health service receives information that is not um publicly known. Uh, and we have to try to make the best decisions we can based on the information that's um uh that's known. And we also have to protect the privacy as best as we can uh of the institutions, the enterprises, the people that we serve. Um, so um, uh, if we were to use a communicable disease, be that a sexually transmitted illness or uh an another disease, we would be discreet about it. And uh, we would try not to uh unnecessarily um uh bring attention to that person. Um, and so that's the balancing act. On the other hand, when we have um uh items that might affect large numbers of people, um, we make disclosures and that's the balancing act. And I get the and the public health service gets criticism on both sides. On Mondays, I meet with the newspaper and on a number of occasions have asked us why we don't talk about things more. And uh, on another level, uh, we have individuals, commercial enterprises, who say, why don't we talk about things less? So we try to strike what we think is a reasonable balance.
So so if I if I could just kind of stop it, just to point the question as as you're talking about the need to, you know, um, to protect that privacy of industrial opera, commercial operations and enterprises. I think the frustration that's out there in the community, um, and I and and I'm curious for your response as well. You know, we have a situation where we have a single migrant farm worker that tests positive that's in a hotel room individually isolated, not living in a congregate setting, but, you know, individually isolated uh in a hotel. Um, and we are providing press releases uh on, you know, disclosure of those outbreaks, but on larger, um, you know, industrial institutional um enterprises, we are not um following that same procedure. So I think that's more the the disconnect that that people see that exists.
Well, the appearance is not always correct. Um, we spend lots of energy with large enterprises and require them to make disclosures as well. Um, um, and uh, and I don't want to talk specifically about this large enterprise, Toietetsoo, because some of those items are still moving forward. Um, there are fundamental differences between two different categories of institutions and employers and and and, you know, um, um, farms that don't have a migrant of most farms do not have people living on the farm other than the farm owner themselves. And then there are farms that are at higher risk because we have people living on the farm and live in congregate settings. So those are where people share bathrooms and kitchens and bedrooms. In some cases, in some farms, you have sixteen people living in a in one bedroom. Other uh congregate settings are like nursing homes and retirement homes, which uh may have uh in the past, uh, one to four people sharing a room and and sharing a bathroom. And now that number uh has been reduced under provincial uh direction. Um, and then you have uh manufacturing enterprises where people aren't actually physically living on the campus or uh or sl- or sharing bedrooms. Each of those have different risk uh parameters. Now, once we have an outbreak and we've declared an outbreak, then we have to do an individual level plan to try to manage that outbreak. Some of them are easy, some of them are difficult. Some of them are based on the risk that we uh make an assessment for. An enterprise that has three people, um, and um, uh, even if all three of those people get sick and all three of them go to the hospital, has a lower risk than an enterprise that might have a thousand people. An enterprise that has a thousand people, there's one percent of the people live in this health district. But as a thousand adults, um, then then we're uh probably down to, assuming that we have, you know, twenty or thirty thousand young people, we're down to one and a half percent or one and a quarter percent of the health district. If we go down to a household level, I know the average household has two point six people. We're now at three percent or four percent. I don't have the exact numbers of of the district. And if we have a hospital that only has five ICU beds and we have a thousand people and five percent of them go to the ICU, that's fifty people. That's going to saturate the resources. Now, those are gross and uh gross calculations on the back of an envelope. But whenever we make decisions about outbreaks, we make decisions based on what is the current level of risk of that institution? What's the level of risk that it might spread to other people? What are the resources that are available to contain it? What are the guidance documents that might uh uh might affect our our decision making? Sometimes I don't agree with the guidance documents, I have to learn to live with them though. Uh, what is the level of risk that we have? Uh, um, uh, uh, what are the resources of the health unit to manage the risk? I've said this publicly, the Scotland outbreak used thirty-nine staff on Saturdays and Sundays. They had two hundred and twenty people uh uh affected ultimately. Some of those people did not live on the farm, they lived off the farm. Um, uh, that could have even been worse than it was. So we have to consider all of those factors in in modulating our dis- our decision making. Also, sometimes we change our policies based on what we have learned. So historically, um, some districts, and this is the balancing act, some districts have allowed uh uh have placed all the enterprises and businesses and outbreak on the webpage. It's memorialized, once you put something on the webpage, it's forever. You know, uh, in our district, we took the position that we should let people make their own disclosure because uh um, uh, at least they can modulate the message based on their uh on uh uh on on their understanding.
Shanker, I might I might just um stop you there. I think we, it's two thirty-six and we've got a fair bit to go through. So I think we're kind of off the the topic of the the question itself. Um, does any other board member have a question for Dr. Nissari? Okay, um, I don't think we do. Um, so with that, if I could have a motion, oh, Counselor, uh, Member Rabbits, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, and through you, um, I should disclose that I am a a member um with a pecuniary interest, a direct pecuniary interest being an employee of Toietetsoo in the Human Resources Department. I won't comment uh on the matter, but I I did want to acknowledge at least today I was tested for COVID nineteen. I had the swab. Um, Nurse Lisa said that it would feel like um a shaken up can of Coke, but I assure you, it it felt just like a cotton swab shoved far down. shoved far down uh, to my nasal cavity. But um, we're lining up, we're getting tested. Um, I think uh, the rails are, we're back on the rails there and I really appreciate uh, everything that our public health unit offered in support to the, the organization. And uh, we have a little village out there. We've got a little community and um, we are feeling the love, whether they uh, be comments on social media or posts, um, or people's well wishes. Uh, I just want to thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Councillor Rabbits, for your comments. Uh, if I could have a motion to receive Dr. Nushtari's um, update? Member Michelli and seconded by a member Van Passen, all those in favor? That is carried. Um, and I think uh, we had general announcements, but if it's okay with the board, I think what we're going to do is we're just going to jump into closed session here um, to deal with the item because public hearings is going to start at uh, 3 o'clock. Um, and we need to start those by 3:15 at the latest. So we do have two in-camera information memos. Oh, sorry, and we had a communications item. My apologies. Uh, we have one communication item today. It's an information memo um, regarding the Ontario seniors dental care program capital funding. Does the board wish to discuss anything with that item? Okay, in that case, if I could have a mover to receive it as information? Councillor Martin, or Member Martin, seconded by Member Columbus, all those in favor? That is carried. Uh, so again, moving into closed session, we have two in-camera information memos for the board. Does the board wish to go into closed session to discuss uh, the items? Um, the first is in regards to uh, an information from Mr. Information memo from uh, Mr. Burgess regarding legal labor relations update. And the second is an information memo regarding um, from Heidi Van Dyke, rather, uh, regarding an operational update in social services. Does the board wish to move into closed? Or prefer to, okay. Um, in that case, if I could have a motion to move into closed session at 2:40 PM pursuant to Sections 239, 2B, D, and K of the Minus Black 2001, as the subject matter relates to personal matters of an unidentifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations, or employee negotiations, any position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Um, we're in a seconder, councillor Columbus, by Member Michelli, all those in favor? And that's carried. Um, so thank you to um, all of our staff members that are on here. I think we're going to ask that you jump off the link and um, those that need to be present, I will just remain on this link for the closed session. Is that correct, Kevin?
That's correct, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Shankar.
All right, all the best.
I have to have that experience, but it's a peace of mind day. I'm glad I did it. Wasn't what I was expecting. I don't know what I was expecting is like long straw shoved down your nose is what it is.
Could I just ask Madam Mayor, do you want to open the public hearings committee and then take a 15 minute break so I can collect all the notes and do that? So that we meet the deadline?
That's perfect.
Okay, we're live. We're all set.
Okay, if I could have a motion to move back into open session at 2:59. Member Taylor, seconded by Member Marten, all those in favor. And that's carried. We have two motions coming out of closed session. The first motion in regards to the information memo from Jason Burgess regarding a legal and labor relations update. Staff, I just need a mover and a seconder to receive that memo as information and staff will be directed to release a public memo in regards to the information provided. Member Rabbit, seconded by Member Michelle Lee, all those in favor. And that's carried. Item B, the information memo from Heidi Van Dyke in regards to an operational update. Mover and a seconder to receive that as information. Member Van Passen, seconded by a member Taylor, all those in favor. And that is carried. My understanding is I accidentally jumped over the approval of the minutes. So you have the minutes of the April 7th regular meeting before you. Are there any errors or omissions? Okay, seeing none, they will be declared adopted. And finally, are there any general announcements relative to public health? Otherwise, you can add those, we'll add those to the end of the public hearings committee. Member Taylor?
Thank you, and I wanted to bring this up earlier, but just had technical difficulties right when we got to the communications bit. Just with the communication member regarding the dental plan. Heidi, did we have an opportunity to talk to the province regarding, you know, that 700 grand would go a whole lot further if we were just paying a dentist in the community to do this work as opposed to spending 700,000 to build the facility? I know we've talked about that during the advisory meeting.
So Mayor Chop through you to Board Member Taylor. We have submitted a request for additional funding through our annual service plan. Once we see what the response is to that, then we can determine how best we move forward. And certainly I will have include that as part of our conversations with the Ministry of Health.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, if I could have a mover and a seconder for the confirming bylaw. 2021-11 BH being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular Board of Health for the Haldem Norfolk Health Unit at this Board of Health meeting held on the 4th of May 2021. That is moved by a member Taylor, seconded by a member Columbus, all those in favor. And that is carried. And finally, a motion to adjourn. Member Michelle Lee, seconded by a member Taylor, all those in favor. And that is carried. All right, so we're immediately going to move into opening the public hearings and then council is going to take a 15 minute break. But if we don't get the public hearings opened within the first 15 minutes after three, then unfortunately they have to be rescheduled. So with that, I will now officially open the public meetings held under the municipal act, the planning act and county policy. Please be advised that to preserve your right to appeal to the local planning appeals tribunal, you are required to make comments or provide written submissions. Passage of a bylaw. It is important to note that no final are being made on these matters today. These meetings are simply to allow the public to provide initial comments and further reports will come forward at a future date.
Mary Chop, I'm sorry, I believe you're supposed to jump over to the other link because we're on the Board of Health link. I believe there's a separate link. And so there's 11 people on the other link, so I think that speech would be best served for them.
That's correct, sorry.
I'll depart at this time.
But thanks for letting me finish that.
No, no problem.
Thanks, Ashley.
Your computer didn't shut down for one second, Madam Mayor?
Looks like we're good. Officially open the public meetings held under the municipal act, the planning act and county policy. Please be advised that to preserve your right to appeal to the local planning appeals tribunal, you are required to make comments or provide written submissions prior to the passage of a bylaw. It is important to note that no final decisions are being made on these matters today. These meetings are simply to allow the public to provide initial comments and further reports will come for a future date. So Counselor Van Passen is actually going to be chairing this meeting today. We just came out of a Board of Health meeting and he needs a few minutes. Counselor Van Passen, do you say 10 minutes to get set up?
Yeah, hopefully we can do it quickly, but.
Okay, so it'll be about 10, let's say, we'll say 15 minutes and everybody will be back to begin the public hearings committee, but we had to open it right away for legislated reasons. So with that, I'm just going to hop off here and Counselor Van Passen and Kevin, I think you've got him the chair's notes?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Rabbit, I saw the wave too late.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I'll have to check with Kevin. I see none, but I don't have everyone on the screen, so, uh...
There are none.
Uh, item 3A on the agenda. Staff report CD 21-29. An application has been received to amend the Norfolk County zoning bylaw. One Zed 2014 to add a special provision to the zoning of the subject lands to permit an accessory residential dwelling to be located more than thirty meters from the primary dwelling unit and to permit a second entrance for the accessory dwelling. Uh, G Douglas Valley Limited, on behalf of Chris and Heather Nun, has put forward this application affecting the lands described as 726 McDowell Road, Simcoe. And, uh, we have Fabian Sarah, uh, staff to present the report.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just going to share my screen for the presentation really quickly.
We lose Counselor Columbus?
Counselor Columbus is still there.
I'm here.
Thank you. So, good afternoon. The, uh, can everybody see the presentation up on their screens?
You're good, uh, Fabian.
Okay, thank you. So, the subject lands are regular in shape and are approximately sixteen points eighteen acres in size. The subject lands front onto the north side of McDowell Road East and is located in the geographic township of Charlottesville. The surrounding, uh, land uses are predominantly agricultural, some residential lots and forested areas. So, in the official plan, the property is designated as agricultural and is zoned agricultural, and the proposed use of an accessory dwelling unit is considered a permitted use in the zoning. Uh, so, this slide here currently shows the proposed development of the site. Excuse me. So, as part of the plan justification report that was submitted, the agent and the, um, property owner had outlined that there were three potential locations in which they have considered for the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, the one shown before you today is their most preferred option. Uh, so, as Counselor Collins had already said, the zoning amendment is for three elements, uh, to, to permit the construction of the accessory dwelling unit greater than thirty meters from the primary dwelling unit. So, the applicant would be asking uh, meters of relief in order to construct the accessory dwelling unit where my mouse currently is. The other components are to permit two entrances on the subject lands. So, currently, this is the entrance that serves the primary dwelling unit, and then this would be the proposed entrance for the accessory unit. And the third component is to preclude the property from a future severance on site.
If I could just interrupt for a minute, Fabian. Uh, on my screen, I think I have a different, uh, map up than what your, uh, cursor is following here. Sorry, that one probably looks better.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I guess it's when I'm switching on mine, uh, my PowerPoint, it's not switching over on this one. So, yeah, I can, I can go over that. So, right here is the, the entrance for the primary dwelling. So, this is the primary dwelling here, and then this is the proposed accessory dwelling unit. So, as you can see, uh, it's, it's well over thirty meters, but given the, the screen space kind of outlines the proposed building envelope in which they could build within this area because it's heavily forested, uh, shown in the previous slide here. So, this, this map doesn't indicate that the, uh, primary dwelling unit is on the site. Just given the age of the photo, this photo is from 2015. It's the most up-to-date photo that we currently have. So, this is why the applicant is requesting a distance of a hundred and sixty meters. And so, this would also permit the two entrances as well as preclude them from doing a severance to divide the property into two at a later date. So, just to reiterate that they could not do that. Um, so, in terms of technical reports that have been received, as I said, we have received a plan justification report that has been submitted by, uh, Valley Engineering Group. And in terms of the agency comments that, that county has received, uh, comments were from Development Engineering in regards to the most easterly entrance was permitted on the condition that the old entrance to the west would be removed. So, that would be the proposed entrance to function as part of the accessory dwelling unit, uh, because only one entrance is permitted to a residential lot per Norfolk County bylaw. Uh, so, in terms of public input, at the time of writing the report and submitting the presentation to council, uh, there were no public input that had been received. So, with that being said, I received a letter today from RC Spencer and Associates. Uh, so, it's an engineering firm in which they have provided comments basically surrounding the potential impacts that the second entrance would have on the property and the surrounding area. Uh, to summarize the contents of their letters, they, they don't see any issues in terms of safety and other vehicular accesses. There have been no other forms of public input received, either positive or negative, uh, in respects to the application. So, because that letter that was received, was submitted, was, was received today, um, it will be attached as an appendix and for the recommendation report to council. So, this is just outlining the, the zoning and the, uh, subject lands. Uh, and so, the recommendation that report CD twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-nine be received as information and that received from the public staff meeting will be considered in a future recommendation staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Fabian. Are there any questions from committee for the planner? Being none, uh, we have the applicant and the agent, uh, with us today.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, I do see that, uh, Michael Columbus has his, his hand raised.
Oh, and Counselor Michelle as well. Okay. Counselor Columbus.
Okay. Yes, uh, to, to the planner, this, uh, it's a, the house or the dwelling that's proposed is a hundred and thirty meters squared. What is the maximum, uh, size dwelling that could be utilized and, and put into the plan as a second dwelling on that property?
So, there are two, um, main elements that uh, hinder size essentially. So, that, the two components are, it would have to be a maximum of forty-five percent of the primary dwelling unit. And the other component is that for accessory structures in the agricultural area, they can have up to two hundred meters for accessory, sorry, two hundred square meters of gross floor area for accessory buildings.
So, this, the plan forward actually meets that, uh, criteria then?
That's correct. So, currently, they would be sitting at, I believe it's a hundred and one square meters for accessory buildings.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Counselor Michelle, did you have your hand up? It should be muted, Counselor Michelle.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just have a, a question for the planner, uh, Fabian. The report indicates that this property is on the north side of McDowell Road, but looking at your maps that you showed us on your PowerPoint, it's clearly on the south side. Is that correct?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. It, it very well could be on the south side. That, that could have just been stuff there. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Okay, we'll, uh, move to the applicant and the agent. Remind you, uh, a five-minute time limit. And, uh, Mr. Valley, will you be, uh, acting as the agent for the, uh, participant?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will be speaking. My name is Eldon Darbison. I'm with G Douglas Valley.
All right. Well, we'll give you your five minutes. Uh, do you have a slide deck that you want to present as well?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. I'll share it now.
You can work with the deputy clerk on that part. That's not my desk.
Okay, no problem.
Eldon, did you want, um, me to do that, or did you wanna, uh, give it a shot? I think, uh, if you're an ec, or a guest or an external, it's a little bit more difficult, so, give it a try.
If it's okay, I'd like to, because I've modified the presentation just slightly.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So, I'll get this all set up for everybody. Okay. Is that, is that on everybody's screen?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Eldon Darbison. I'm a registered professional planner with G Douglas Valley Limited. Uh, the applicants are Chris and Heather Nun. The property is located at seven-two-six McDowell Street, just east of Yule Road. It's approximately ten kilometers west of Simcoe. The lands are six point seven hectares, and they benefit from a large, significant woodland area. The owners wish to construct an accessory residential dwelling unit on their property. The purpose of the accessory dwelling and its proposed location is to provide a home on-site for their disabled son with some level of independence from the family, to provide living accommodations for the owner's aging parents, to ensure the location is reasonable and compatible with agricultural activities, and to enhance the property character and not detract from the existing driveway access and landscaping. To summarize the amendments, they are necessary to simply position the accessory dwelling most desirable and appropriate location on the property, utilize the existing culvert access for both the accessory dwelling and agricultural vehicles, and to prevent a future severance. Why are the amendments required? Well firstly, it's not possible to locate the accessory dwelling within thirty meters of the main dwelling. The forested area is protected, and it cannot be cleared to make room for the accessory dwelling and the physical construction of driveway and private water sanitary services. Secondly, the access, uh, permit for the main driveway required that the original act be removed. However, provided that council allows the second access, there is a greater benefit. The existing culvert can provide a more appropriate access for the accessory dwelling and agricultural vehicles. Through pre-consultation, planning staffs that we consider and discuss alternative locations for the accessory dwelling. This slide per, represents the owner's preferation. This layout is appropriate as it is located in an area that is appropriately separated from the main dwelling privately to purposes. It utilizes the existing culvert access directly across the street from an existing residential driveway. It provides independent wheelchair bus transportation service access and access for farm vehicles. The layout preserves the ability to till the greatest amount of agricultural lands with the least amount of impacts. And there are no safety issues with the original access, which is supported by a letter from RC Spencer Associates, who are professional traffic engineers. In my understanding, that this letter was, uh, circulated or it will be circulated to council and staff, and as the planner had mentioned, will be included in the final recommendation report. We considered locating the accessory dwelling by the main driveway. This option is not appropriate as it is directly in front of the existing main dwelling. It requires extensions of the main driveway near accessory dwelling to provide, uh, farm vehicle access. It requires an extension of another driveway for wheelchair accessible bus transportation. So, essentially, you're putting three driveways in one. It is downwind of any pericultural activity such as tilling and dust and chemical sprays. It does not improve the character of the property and requires the removal of the existing landscaping at the driveway extension locations. We considered locating the accessory dwelling in the middle of the front yard. This option is not desirable either as it amplifies the same reasons for rejecting alternative location. Number one, it also reduces the efficient use of the lands, and it would be expensive to construct the extended driveways. We're asking council to allow the second access to this property to ensure the best location for the accessory dwelling. The entrance bylaw contains standards that cannot be considered, uh, so, that does not consider all the circumstances. However, the intent of the entered seemed to be towards ensuring safety. Similar to the zoning bylaws, the zone provisions don't always facilitate an appropriate development. This is the case for the second access. In this case, keeping the second access is safe, it makes sense, and it's supported by a professional traffic engineer. It helps reduce the need for undesirable and expensive multiple and long driveways, and it will allow for the most desirable development of the lands. In closing, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and request for second access is unique in nature, considering the location of the existing dwelling and forested area. They maintain the intent of the zoning bylaw. They do not create safety issues, and it allows the owners to provide a home for their son and aging parents in the most desirable and appropriate location. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to present. Heather Nun, one of the owners, would like to say a few words as well. Uh, between the two of us, we can answer any questions. Thank you very much.
In addition to what Eldon said, I'm just coming from a mom's point of view of caring for a child with special needs, and also, my parents, who are aging, have expressed a desire to live here near him, and they're an integral part in his life still. Um, they help provide respite. He'd be able to visit them and then hopefully transition in with them, uh, knowing that there's not a lot of housing available in this community for adults with special needs, and the ability to provide that for him and still be able to have contact with him is important to us and important to his other siblings. There's two brothers and a sister as well. Um, they want to be a part of his life, and we all know right now what the housing and, um, the ability to visit a loved one is like. Uh, I wouldn't want that for him, not to be able to see us if he needed to, if there was a shutdown or a lockdown again, I would, I would want to be able to go see him and be able to touch him and give him a kiss. So, to us, that's the most important thing. Giving him some independence as he ages, as he's now twenty, and he will be only in school just slightly longer. Um, we'd really like to have him near us, but still allow him to have some independence, which was what our goal was for him to transition anyways to as an adult. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Counselor Huffman, you look like you, uh, just need to ask, ask a question of the applicant.
I don't necessarily have to. Hi, Heather. Um, I, I just want to say that this is such a great plan for Elias. And, um, I, I just, I, I know that not all families are able to, to be able to provide this, this support. And, uh, Heather is right. The, the, um... And Heather is right, the, the, the housing that is available for adults, especially young adults, to transition into is of limited basis. And I just, I really support this application, and I know that they will do the best in terms of making sure that this is well enveloped into the community, and I wish them all the success with this development. And I can't believe he's twenty.
Reminder, this is the public hearings part, so we're just looking for information, so is there any questions from other members for the applicant or the agent? Seeing none?
Counselor Columbus.
Oh, again, I don't have Counselor Columbus on my screen, so Counselor Columbus?
Yes, my question is to the planner. And say, twenty, thirty, forty years down the road, this house, this second dwelling is still standing. Would it end up, could it end up being rented out to just anybody other than a family member?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that would dependently on the zoning provisions at the time.
At the time, okay, thanks.
Seeing no more questions or comments, or if there are any, let me know.
Seeing none as well.
And if there are none, does anyone wish to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative? Counselor Huffman, you're moving the staff recommendation, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everyone, we'll move on to their next report. Next one, item three B, is Staff Report CD twenty-one dash thirty, An Application To amend the official plan to include a site-specific policy to the existing agricultural designation to permit a farm condominium dwelling units with resort-oriented on-farm diversified uses, including food and beverage services, group tourist cabins, and conference center. The zoning bylaw amendment is also associated with this application to add a special provision to the current agricultural zone to permit single-detached dwellings on, and on-farm diversified uses, including tourist cabins, riding arena, and stables, wedding and conference center, and a saloon. G Douglas Valley, on behalf of Jeff Bouk, has put forth the application affecting the lands described as four-thirty-six Front Road, St. Williams, Ontario. Tricia Gittens, will you be presenting the report, of course?
Yes, I'll be presenting the report on behalf of Mohammed, who was unable to be here this afternoon. So, I'll do my best to present on his behalf. So if we can just go to the next slide, I'll start with providing some context for the site for those who aren't familiar. So, the subject property is just under twenty-four hectares, at twenty-three-point-six hectares, and is located outside of the urban boundary of St. Williams, between Port Rowan and Booths Harbor. The subject site includes currently a number of single-detached dwellings, and a portion of the land is currently farmed with cash crops. The surrounding land uses are predominantly agricultural, but there's also various recreational facilities within this area, including lifestyle recreational condominiums for retirees and seniors, retirement homes, boathouses, marina, and other recreational type of facilities within one kilometer both east and west of the site. The subject lands are designated as agriculture in the official plan, and are zoned for the most part agricultural as well, with the portions of subject lands being hazard lands, and some of it, the land also being provincially significant wetland, which you can see, the green area there, hopefully you can see that. If we go to slide three, please. So, the development proposal is quite unique and interesting. It's includes twenty-three condominium-style what, what are being proposed to be called farm dwelling units, with certain supporting facilities, which we're calling, are linking to on-farm diversified uses, that would be linked to the local agricultural production of, of the site and the agricultural setting of the area. So, the proposed, proposed accessory uses include a tourist cabin, a saloon, a conference area, upgraded equestrian facility, and ranch area. So, the proposal would include an amendment to the official plan for a site-specific use for this proposed use to identify the condominium farm dwelling units, and the various on-farm diversified uses. And then further, a zoning bylaw amendment would be required to permit these additional uses. We go to slide four. So, from a policy context, staff have been working with the applicant and their agent to work through the policy conformity exercise. And here, we've just identified the key area that we're looking at is the creation of new residential lots within the prime agricultural area. So, looking at how to address that. And then, the official plan policy, section seven-two-two, where the limited non-agricultural uses being permitted on the subject lands. The key to all of this is that the subject lands are within the Lake Shore Special Policy Area, which does provide opportunity for additional uses on lands designated agriculture, which are particularly linked to the unique tourist opportunities and tourist-related uses being proposed here. If we go to the next slide, please. So, as part of this submission, a planning justification report was submitted by the agent, and it provided some high-level information, technical information related to functional servicing, agricultural impact, environmental impact, traffic overview, geotechnical analysis. It also provided an MDS minand analysis. And I'm seeing here, there was a natural heritage development, some information was also submitted in relation to the natural heritage piece. The applicants are aware that subject to approval of this application, they will be required to submit additional technical reports, which would come at the next stages. We've received agency comments so far, and they've identified, as previously stated, that additional work submissions would be required for the next planning approval stage. And we do require some additional conversation around the on-farm diversified uses and looking at the condominium development and how to, how to address that in relation to the PPS requirements. So, from that, that is a summary of the proposal, and I do believe also the applicant is going to be providing a presentation that can provide some further context. With that, I can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Tricia, are there any questions from committee to the planner?
Counselor Columbus.
Mr. Chairman, Mike here, question. Tricia, can you go into some detail as to the concerns raised by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and housing with respect to proceeding with the plan as?
So, the comment relates to the creation of additional lots in, in the agricultural zone. So, as we're all aware, the PPS has very specific policy about creating new lots on agricultural land. And so, that is what we're working through at this time, and focusing on that Lake Shore Special Policy area as well. That's the main item.
Kevin, if you could pull that presentation down off the screen, please?
I'm, like, there it goes.
There. Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Chair Van Passen, through you to, to staff, to Tricia. When, when we're talking about lots, are we talking about, Lynn? These obviously aren't going to be, these buildings aren't going to be something that's going to be for sale, correct?
Through the chair. Sorry, you cut off, your question cut off, can you repeat that?
So, these, these buildings that we're talking about, they're not something that's going to be sold individually as a residence or anything like that, is that correct?
Through the chair, my understanding is that the individual condominiums would be purchased by, by different families, yes.
Okay, so they're to be purchased, they're not just as, okay, I guess I was understanding it to be more of vacation rental places, so, okay, thank you for that clarification.
And maybe when the applicant makes their presentation, they might give us some more detail on the plans that way. Are there any other hands up that I'm missing, Kevin?
Counselor Taylor. Oh, he's just adjusting his camera, my apologies.
Okay, and while we have the applicant and the agent here, so we will give them five minutes to make their presentation. Is Mr. Darbison or Mr. Valley going to be making the presentation on this?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Darbison again. All right, I'll share my screen. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to present this afternoon. I'm Eldon Darbison, I'm a registered professional planner with G Douglas Valley, and our clients are father and son, Jeff and Rob Bouk. So, the property is located at four-three-six Road in St. Williams at the S Bend, along the lake shore between Booths Harbor and Port Rowan. They are surrounded by agricultural lands and a very few uses. The property enjoys a beautiful, protected natural ravine area and access to the lake shore. There are several components of BB Ranch. This is a question resort for families, couples, and corporate groups. It is a vacation resort for people who wish to live and vacation with their horses. The resort will include a multi-stable and conference center, tourist accommodation in the form of cabins or inn, homes for families to construct and offer for vacation rental, a saloon, which is the resort restaurant that will showcase its dish based on all locally sourced food, and it is nestled in a cove of protected forest with a beautiful view of the shoreline. The inspiration for the BB Ranch work comes from a few ideas and experiences. Animals and homes only exist together in the rural area. The site is currently used for ranching, and the BB Ranch Resort is designed for people who love horses. This resort concept currently does not exist in Norfolk, and it must be located in the agricultural area. The main inspiration for BB Ranch comes from the owner's love for horses. They have enjoyed many similar rural destinations in the Virginia and Tennessee area, where they have been on vacation with their own horses. The BB Ranch Resort concept aligns with many other tourism opportunities and locally-produced food suppliers. It is located in an area that does not create negative impacts to the lands themselves, the Lake Erie shoreline, or the on-natural features. Since this use was not anticipated in the county, we must make applications to amend policies to allow the resort to become. Both the official plan and Lake Shore Secondary Plan contain policies that direct development and encourage tourism uses and accommodation. Simply put, BB Ranch checks off all the boxes for good development. In order to permit the BB Ranch Resort concept, amendments are required for three planning documents, as shown on the slide. Without going into the specifics, the policies generally support the proposed development. However, when policies of these planning documents were created, the policy creators could not anticipate this unique resort-oriented concept. So, in order to see BB Ranch become a reality, amendments are required to tweak the policy and the zoning. In closing, the BB Ranch concept is an exciting and unique opportunity for Norfolk. It is an innovative resort-oriented project that caters to the agritourism industry. Policies need tweaking to facilitate the proposed resort. The concept is encouraged by and maintains the intent of policy. It achieves the county's goals and objectives, it provides heated roofed accommodation, it's located near other tourism-related uses, and it prides itself on the use of local produce, meat, and fish products. At the end of the day, seeking a favorable decision from council. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Jeff Bouk, one of the owners, would like to say a few words also, and before saying so, I or the team would be happy to answer any questions.
Now, could I just ask one favor, could you go back to your first slide there for a second?
Sure. There you go.
I just did, maybe I'll ask Counselor Columbus for a comment. When they talk about prime agricultural land, and I look at that corn crop, I'm not, I'm not thinking that one's going to win you any awards at the Norfolk County Fair, what do you think, Mike?
I agree, it's a real good-looking corn crop, it is class-two soil, and it is subjected to a late-moderated climate, which increases yields significantly.
It doesn't look like there's much in that one, is there? Okay, so, you want to hear from the applicant?
Am I live right now?
I have you on my screen, so hopefully everybody else does too.
All right, sounds good, thank. Yeah, I wanted to add to what's already been said, but the first thing is, we're, we're super excited to be able to even bring this to Norfolk. My wife and I have traveled extensively, you know, throughout Virginia, Tennessee, a little bit in Kentucky as well. And we stay at similar places like this, where you take your horse, you, you rent the horse or a house, and keep your, keep your horse out in a barn, you know, they'll take care of it. Anyway, we, we have, we've been thinking about it for a little while. And to be honest, we did do a project once before within the county, and had some challenges, so I thought, if we're going to do this, I want to, I want to do it, so it makes it as simple as possible. If you notice, we actually chose the layout of the property, staying away from any, any of the areas that would cause some issues, like including the ravine and things like that. So, we, we just designed to stay, stay that away. I want to say that there's a lot more people travel with horses than you may think, you know? You know, I want to say it's, it's not, maybe it's not as big as NASCAR, but it's still, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty cool thing. To answer, Counselor Kim, I wanted to address that about, of the houses sold. Yes, they're sold, but they, the houses get put in a rental program. It's no different than if you were to, say, buy a condo out at Banff, you know, or Whistler, and you live here in Norfolk, you, you fly out and use it when you want, but when you're not there, then you put it in a rental program. And that's really how a lot of the places are set up, like, we are in a rural area, you know? You know, this is a pretty, you know, I want to say high-class proposal we are, are talking about, so people say from Burlington, Oakville, Toronto, they're doing their deal in the city and stuff, but they would be investors, again, more people to invest in Norfolk, you know? And I like to say, if you had kids, and you had a little girl named Sally, and she kept her horse in Burlington in the stable, like, she could easily, you know, come down for a week's vacation, you know, with the family and, and bring her horse. I don't know, it's pretty, we're pretty passionate about horses, and, and see this as a, as a good fit, you know? It fits in along, along the lake shore, you know, with the other tourism partners that we have. I mean, we're, we live in Norfolk, we love Norfolk, and we feel this is a pretty good fit. And at the end of the day, as Eldon said, we are looking for a favorable decision, and hope you guys are all on, on board with that.
Okay, thank you, and any questions for the applicant or the agent? Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have so much of a question, as much as I'd just maybe like to share some feedback that may be helpful before the next meeting. At large, I think this is a very unique and forward-thinking proposal, and, and it sounds really cool. I, I can definitely see myself visiting it when you're, when you're up and ready. uh really cool, I, I can definitely see myself visiting it uh when you're, when you're up and ready. Although I did just want to go on the record and maybe echo Counselor Huffman's concerns, the up of the parcels and the sale of, of the parcels, although I do hear what you're saying and understand how it may work elsewhere, um on the ag lands is a bit of a head scratcher for me, and so what I would be looking for to you, to your agent, to our staff as well, is uh some way to make that work. I don't wanna stand in between your proposal, but I know that this council has kicked the can around on agricultural uses um for much less than, than this type of proposal, so I definitely would be interested before it comes back to council on hearing more and learning more about a way in, in the provincial policy statement that that is a, a, a good solution to go for. Um but at large, the proposal sounds very positive, so thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Counselor Michele?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh this is to Jeff. Jeff, I, you and I have talked about this many times, and uh I just wanna commend you on your unique and creative entrepreneurial spirit. Uh you've put a lot of thought into this, you can tell this is the result of a passion that you have for horses and for the whole um horse keeping business and the whole tourism aspect of all of that, so uh I just wanna commend you on some really, really creative thinking.
Thank you very much.
Uh any more questions on the report? If not, would somebody like to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative? Counselor Taylor and Counselor Martin, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
So, am I still alive? Am I, am I still alive?
Yeah, you're, you're still there.
Okay, so I guess I wanna believe that we're gonna just keep pushing this ball forward, we're gonna get everything all sorted out. You know, I think we've kinda got this whole lot uh issue resolved on our side, we gotta, you know, we got a few things to get sorted out, but we, we've gotta, we think we got that worked out. I guess all I wanna know is, from here, what's kinda, when, when you guys actually get to make a decision to do this? I've asked our uh, uh Valley's office, and they can't give me a straight answer, so I'm asking you guys.
Well, this is part of the, the process that we tweaked a little bit last year, that this meeting this time is for public input, and since there was none, um the, there's not a whole lot left for the staff to tweak, so they'll sit down with the applicant or with House and the Agent, and they will write a final report that they will present to council um with their recommendation on whether it should be approved or not approved, or what changes should be made. And uh generally, that comes not too long down the road, um so um I'm sure your agent will talk to our planners and uh they'll do lunch and they'll sort it, figure this out, so.
Awesome.
But generally, there's not a, not a big lag between the two.
Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate it, everybody. It's just exciting, man, I'm jacked, I can't say that.
Okay, thanks very much, and uh, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing it in the digging ground soon as well, so.
Awesome, awesome.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
So we will move on to Staff Report CD twenty-one dash twenty-three. An application's been received to permit an accessory residential unit in the second story within an existing commercial building located in a marine commercial zone on a parcel of land, which does not have frontage on a fully maintained roadway. There's a current concurrent deeming by law to consolidate lots thirteen, fourteen, and part of lot fifteen and Jalen Crescent, uh Park Plan four thirty-nine as one parcel. Uh John Van Halton Jr. and Agent Civic Planning Solutions put forth the application affecting the lands described in fifteen, Jalen Crescent. And Tricia, you'll be presenting this report as well?
Again, yes, I'll be presenting on behalf of Mohammed Owen, um so I'll do my best to, to answer any questions that may come from this as well. So the subject lands are located uh within the urban area of Port Dover, and the bottom portion of the, the picture there identifies the site. So it's on Jalen Crescent, the northwest portion of Jalen on the curve there, and just adjacent to um Black Creek. Um if we go to the next slide, oh, I should have mentioned, so the subject lands um are designated hazard land in the official plan and zoned marine commercial. And the majority of surrounded land uses are residential and hazard lands. So this slide provides an illustration of the existing structure on the site, and the request is to change the zoning to add a provision to permit the accessory residential dwelling on the second floor to be used for the residential use. Um and the second portion is the deeming bylaw to, essentially, there's two lots there to merge them together and uh in order that the structure is sitting on one, one parcel. If we go to the next slide, please. So uh Planning Justification Report was submitted by Civic Planning Solutions. Um at this time, um agency comments that were provided, uh that I, we would like to highlight for council's information, uh confirm that currently there's no municipal sanitary sewers uh available to the property. So subject to approvals, uh there would be requirement to have an agreement with the owner for the connection of the private sanitary force main, and also in agreement with the county acknowledging uh that the future maintenance of the private sanitary force main uh would be um borne by the owner and not the county. Um also, at this time, we have not received comments from the Long Point Regional Conservation Authority, and we would need comments prior to coming back to council with any recommendations. Um at this, if we go to the next slide, please. There is a, a history with this site, uh with various uh other applications. So the original subdivision for the site was created in nineteen fifty-eight. Um staff have determined that under previous planning applications for minor variance, was an OMB appeal and a decision by the OMP in relation to the repair shop um being located on the site and on the road that at the time was uh unopened and unmaintained. Um we understand that the building was constructed in nineteen ninety-five, and uh there was another minor variance application in two thousand and seven uh to address the interior side yard. And then in twenty fourteen, a new planning application was filed uh for the exact same purpose, so to recognize the accessory residential um unit in the structure to legalize that use. At that time, um the application was refused by council. So um the applicant is permitted to, any landowner can make application uh for consideration with, with new information, and that's what's happened here. Um at this time, we've received some public input. Uh Mohammed has identified here, he's had two over-the-phone conversations with, with individuals in opposition of the development, and we have received two written letters uh in support of the proposal. If you go to the next slide, please. So at this time, as with any application, we're presenting this as part of a public hearing and identify that any comments received as part of this public meeting will be considered in the future rec, future recommendation report. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Tricia, uh are there any questions from the committee? The staff, Counselor Columbus?
Yes, uh thank you. Tricia, is the upstairs unit that we're speaking about, person occupied or?
Um through the chair, uh Counselor Columbus, if you could please repeat your question, it, it got sort of mumbled.
Yes. It, it, the, the unit, the upstairs unit that we're discussing in particular, is it currently occupied by persons or is it vacant?
Uh when uh, when I conducted a staff, I was on-site, it did not appear to me that anybody was residing there at that time.
Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Tricia, thank you for going into a bit of the historic knowledge uh on the file, because when we got the application, I didn't read into it that much and, and received a phone call, so I think I wasn't privy to, so that's good to discuss on the public record. Um my two questions would be firstly, uh the stakeholder information from other, other applicants uh or sorry, not applicants, specifically LPRCA is what I'm wondering about. Will we, or maybe Counselor Columbus can answer this, will we certainly have that come time to make a decision on this file? That, to me, seems like biggest factor.
Uh thank you, through the chair, this application will not come forward for consideration until we have received comments from the conservation authority.
Okay, thank you, and so the comments aren't included now because the conservation authority is busy? Is that fair to say, uh they're delayed or?
Through the chair, for whatever reason, they were delayed in getting us their comments.
Okay. Um my second question through the chair to you, Tricia, would be, you mentioned the applications come forward before and it's coming, you know, any applicant is eligible to um request again at, at council based on new information. What is the new information that should be taken in to consideration? If the applicants are looking for a different decision?
Thank you, through the chair, so uh when the original application came through, there was uh, there was multiple layers of issues, one being the open and maintained road, my understanding now is the road uh currently is, is maintained and is in the capital budget for upgrades the next year or two. Um and then the, the servicing conditions have been identified, that was one of the main issues. And then the other issue as, as uh identified was comments from the conservation authority, really focused on the safety issue, so if there was flooding or an emergency circumstance, making sure that whoever was residing in that unit could safely leave, leave the building, so um that still needs to be addressed, and I do believe the agent here is, is here, perhaps could provide additional information there when he speaks.
Okay, sorry, I do have one further question through you, Mr. Chair, to um Tricia and/or any other staff listening on the line here, I have had questions before from the community about maintenance of this road, and then I read in the OMB report that that was an agreement with City of Nanacoke, um that the um applicant, the old landowner at that time, would, would undertake maintenance on Jalen Crescent and pay for that. Um is that accurate, has that been happening? Because I read in the uh report from the planner, Mr. Rowe, at one point in time it's referenced as fully maintained road, and another time it is not referenced as that. So can we set the record straight here with the public on Jalen Crescent, the original agreement from the OMB? Care and maintenance for it, and what contract, if any, is there right now, are you able to comment?
Um through the chair, I don't know the specifics for the, the current maintenance. Um I don't know if anybody is on the line from Public Works, but we could perhaps collect that information um and make sure it's flagged in the recommendation report, uh unless there's uh somebody else on the call um who can address that.
Right, I can ask that of the applicant as, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
Well, just to follow up a bit on that, uh um I, I've dealt with this situation here before when I was on council with the City of Nanacoke, and you know, that was my understanding at the time, that one of the conditions was that Jalen Crescent be brought up to municipal standards by the applicant at the time, and that they'd be, the applicant at the time be responsible to maintain it, and there's been an ongoing argument for many years whether that, that was ever done. But if it's in the capital budget for the Corporation of Norfolk County to upgrade that road to municipal standard, then obviously it hasn't been completed as per the original agreement back in the nineties, so uh I would like a lot more information from Public Works on uh whether that was done, and maybe the applicant can give us some updates on uh on that as well later on, so are there any other questions for the planners? Counselor Columbus?
Yes, uh previously, this property probably still is on a holding tank, which is a huge issue, I believe, for the LPRCA as well. And that, my understanding is, is from what I read, was that there's an opportunity here to hook it to municipal services, is that correct, Trish?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, do you see anybody else who has questions, or can we move on to the, the applicant and their agent?
We can move on to the applicant and agent.
Okay.
Sorry, I can see Mr. Goddard.
Mr. Goddard, do you have a comment on that, or is it uh? Or we can, we can call him in later, so uh we have the applicant and the agent. Or, you know, David Rowe and the applicant, so uh I'll remind you, you got five minutes, so who would like to uh?
Uh David Rowe, I'm the uh agent for the applicant. Um yes, a number of things have changed and ever, uh over the years since uh the application was last before council. Now, I guess I could stand corrected, but my understanding is that uh uh the applicant does uh pay money directly to the county for maintenance of the road, including uh snow plowing. Um also, since that time, uh there was a uh new home built directly to the east by uh Jack Robelart, some of uh council may remember that. Uh as part of that uh development and agreement, um uh services were to be made available both for the Robelart uh uh home as well as for the uh marina. And since that date, the actual physical uh uh pipe for the uh, for the sewer connection have installed uh to the uh, to the uh marina. Uh the only thing that needs to be done is the pump installed and the maintenance agreement uh uh be signed with the county, at which time then the holding tank, which was a major issue originally, uh could be uh could be uh uh removed and resolve that problem. I also understand that there is municipal water uh to the site, and that uh monies have been set aside, and I know that uh Jack Robelart in particular paid monies for the, towards the maintenance and the upgrade of uh the Crescent um to service his cottage pro, or his house property as well. I understand that uh monies were to be paid uh by the marina for that particular purpose as well. Now, um the purpose of the uh application is to permit uh the owners to reside in the uh second floor apartment, uh which is presently vacant, has been vacant since the refusal of the uh, of the application last time. And the intent would be to have onsite supervision uh of the marina. Now, uh if you look around the county, uh uh many of the marinas are, of course, uh look at Long Point, uh for example, uh uh we have marinas that are on provincially significant wet lands, we have marinas that are situated on hazard land, and because of history, those marinas all do have uh permanent year-round uh residential uses on them. And those marinas do have the owners, in fact, living on the marina. Uh and part of the reason for that is not only security, but also should you get a situation, which does happen in Port Dover with the water uh rising uh up the uh, the creek to uh necessary to get in and tie off the boats so that we don't get any boats being tied down and wind up sinking, and well, that is, I thought the applicant is to be there to, to do that. Now, the guess of the thought is that uh somebody might just sleep right through and not, and miss the whole flood. Now, if you're in charge of marina and you've got Now, if you're in charge of marina and you've got millions of dollars worth of boats sitting in your marina, you better be awake and you better be out there tying off and protecting them. I took this application on because the circumstances had changed. The servicing, quite frankly, that was not in place previously is in place or can be made in place with this decision. And to now say, well, you know, we don't think that it's really safe for somebody to be living in, on this site. Well, then we look at Long Point, we look at Turkey Point, both of them are eight, ten, sometimes even higher, feet underwater under a regional flood. And quite frankly, if, if we're prepared to allow the developments that we have at Long Point, including condominiums out on the point, we allow people to make huge financial investments in their cottages at Long Point and Turkey Point. And then come back and say, wow, we just don't think it's right for the owner of the marina to be able to be accommodated in a second floor apartment to keep an eye on his business. To me, that doesn't appear to be very consistent. And that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you, David. Do the applicants actually want to make any comments or just to answer questions later?
If anyone's got any questions, we can answer them or whatever.
Do we have any questions from committee for Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the Van Holtrons. Just wondering if you can comment on the road agreement and clear that up on the, on the record.
There is a current road agreement in place, and the county does file and grade Jalen Crescent. And we do have an agreement in place for that.
So, sorry, the county provides the services and then your?
We, we pay for it. Yeah.
Okay. And then aside of anything that your applicant, sorry, that your agent mentioned, are there any other changes that you want to know on the record that would make this file different from the 215?
We've got the municipal sewer line right at the building now, and it's tied into Don John, so that's ready to, ready to go. We just have to do the hookup. And the damage is pretty much covered on those bases.
And because, through you, Mr. Chair, because I wasn't there, was that the foundation of the conversation in 215, that it was not hooked up onto services? Or was it also, were there other, other issues? Was that the deciding factor for the council of the day, I guess, is what I'm asking? Sorry.
Starting to extend the question into opinion of the council of the day back in 2015, but if you rephrase it to ask what has changed since then?
Well, I did. And as municipal services. So I guess what I'm asking is, because both you and the, and the agent have noted the municipal service hookup, so in your opinion, just because I wasn't around the table at that point in time, was the discussion heavily from council members in opposition because it didn't have that hookup?
Yes. Yes, that was, that was the main reason.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
And I'll just ask that the applicant and agent stick around in case other questions come up, because we have a few other speakers on the list want to make presentations. So any more questions from committee? If seeing none, then I'll ask Kevin. We have Jay Hitchens listed. Is he available to make a presentation?
He's in the attendance room here. Mr. Hitchens, are you available to comment?
You're on mute, sorry.
Should be.
Yeah, I can hear you now. So I'll just remind you, you've got five minutes.
Thank you. We're the solicitors for Teresa Livingston, who owns property at 5 Jalen Crescent. Mrs. Livingston wishes to express her concern with respect to the application at 15 Jalen Crescent. She has sent in her own letter, which has the July 14, or July 14 of 2015 staff report attached to it and the OMB decision. So those should be available to staff and council. Now, it's been indicated that the big thing was servicing. But I want to read to you the conclusion of the staff report at that time. The community planning division is not satisfied that the proposed development is consistent with the 2014 provincial policy statement with regard to protecting public health and safety, nor does it meet the intent or purpose of the applicable official plan policies. The LPRCA does not support the extension of uses to include residential uses. Public Works and Environmental Services have commented on the significant works that would be required, including sanitary sewer services and road upgrades. The staff recommended that the application be refused. While it's quite correct that people are always allowed to make an application, it can be termed as an abusive process if nothing has really changed. And with the greatest of respect to Mr. Rowe, I do not know that there have been any changes. There's talk of changes. There's talk of assuming the road. It's in a budget. The road has not been upgraded. The services are there, but they've not been inspected. There's no permit for them. And so to that extent, the application in our submission is in the same position it was when it came forward in 2015, and should once again be refused. At the very least, the application is premature until at least the following have taken place. Jalen Crescent is brought up to municipal standard at the owner's cost and assumed by the municipality. The sewage facilities are connected, inspected, and approved by the MOE and the county, as the staff report points out. LPRCA must have approved the conversion. The building department has confirmed the building permit for conversion has been issued and that the dwelling unit meets today's building code standards. Mr. Rowe gave you a thorough review of the provincial policy statement 2020. I'd ask you to read that. And to my mind, it speaks more to protecting the hazard lands, preventing development, promoting health and safety, and not promoting a residential use in a hazard land designation. Quite frankly, the suggestion of having a boat available to evacuate the residents goes to show that evacuation is a real possibility and risk. The Norfolk County Official Plan, at page 99 of your report, section 7.3, that through the hazard lands designation, it is the intent of the county to protect life and property by respecting natural and human-made hazards. New development should only take place in areas that are not susceptible to hazards. The zoning bylaw does not allow for this use, and for good reason. It is not, is not consistent with the county official plan. The, Mr. Rowe indicates that the proposed residential unit will not offend the policies of the PPS or the Norfolk County Official Plan. That does not meet the requirement of the Planning Act that the application be consistent with the provincial policy and official plans. Mr. Rowe says the need for security of boats justifies placing people in a hazard zone in harm's way. Does it really justify putting a residential unit in there? Remembering that you have no control over the occupants of that unit. They could, they don't have to be the Van Holtrons. They don't have to be an employee. This property could be rented, and there's nothing that a zoning bylaw can do about it. It can be rented to a family with children. We ask you to place the health and safety of your residents above that of supervising craft that can be done otherwise than through allowing a second residential unit. You can have patrols. You can have patrols when it's justified. And so there are other alternatives available than creating in our submission a residential unit. I would commend to you the full planning staff report, the OMB decision, Mrs. Livingston's letter to you, which outlines other matters of concern. And given the time limit, I will finish with that, sir, and ask that we be notified when the matter comes, is to come back before committee or council. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I let you run a little bit over, but you sounded like you were winding up. So are there any questions for the deputation? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir. And Kevin, do we have Gary Munce? Is he calling in or?
I believe he intended to call in. However, I do not see him on the list here or any phone numbers for that matter. I'm not sure if the link has worked or if there's a technical issue. But he, I know he did intend to speak.
Is there anyone else on the line who would like to address the committee?
Jason Godby, our general manager for Public Works, for Public Works, has also had his hand up for a little bit. I believe he wanted to make a comment from earlier.
Yeah, I thought we'd get through the deputations, and we can always get back to staff because they have to stay here till we let them go, right? So Jason, would you like to make a comment or answer as a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm hoping that you can all hear me all right. I just wanted to, there's been a number of comments and things made about the actual status of Jalen Crescent, opened and maintained or not. There was reference to the maintenance agreement. Staff will bring back additional details on that. My, my knowledge of the situation is slightly varied from some of the things I've been hearing today, so I want you to verify those things. And we will, we will make sure and bring that back to council when this comes back so we can get you all the clear-cut facts as to what's going on with Jalen.
Did I answer your question, Counselor Martin, or you have another question for Jason?
I have another question. I don't know if it's for Jason. That's, that's great if something comes back concerning that. That's fine. My other question, it just kind of dawned on me, we're hearing from the Livingston's legal team and a few others about the OMB decision. But those are apples and oranges. So through the chair to our staff, besides the findings in the OMB, which state the road needs to be maintained, why is the OMB relevant to today's decision? Or through to Mr. Hitchens, if he wants to clarify? Because my understanding is the OMB decision is concerning the shop and an agreement about what type of activities and boat repairs and maintenance and so on that would happen. But the OMB decision is not about a residential dwelling, so.
Well, I could answer part of that from my little bit of history with the City of Nanacoque. And I think Mr. Munce was actually a counselor when the OMB hearing came out. But it all boiled down at the time that, like, one of the conditions of building is that it has to be on an open municipal road. And it is also pretty standard practice, when you want a municipal road opened at your request, that you need to bring it up to municipal standards, and then you need it over to the municipality, or you, the municipality takes it over from there, no different than a subdivision where the developer puts in the roads. When they're all fixed, then they get needed over to the county. And I think that's been the ongoing argument, you know, through the 90s and probably the early 2000s about whether that condition of upgrading Jalen Crescent to municipal standard was ever met. And then they shouldn't have been able to build the building until that happened. And I think that's the ongoing argument from 25 years ago. And I'm sure Mr. Van Holteren can sort of, he's been on, on the other side of it, taking flak from both sides as well. But that's always what my understanding was in my time on council, that there was a great debate whether they met one condition and shouldn't have been allowed condition number two because they never met condition number one, and somehow it slipped through the cracks. So I'm sure the, the other side has a totally different explanation of that from back in the day. But that was always my understanding at the time in the, in the late 90s.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you. That's, there's some good historic knowledge, and Counselor Columbus probably knows as well. So would it be possible then to get some comments either from Mr. Van Holtrun, from Mr. Hitchens, or, and/or both? And then it leads me to the next thought. Doesn't it not make sense to just bring the road up to whatever the standard is for the OMB decision, get some comments from Long Point, and then discuss this? Because again, I understand that there are some agreements that should, should have been met. They may have been met, but to me, they're two separate issues. So if there's something that needs to be done to make this more eligible, then it makes sense to have that conversation. But unless I'm missing something and someone else can chime in.
It wouldn't be like the first time since we have sat on this council that we found out things were missed in the past by Norfolk County, right? Do you want to make a comment?
Can we speak?
Yeah.
Yeah. With regards to Jalen Crescent, why has new, new construction been allowed on it if, if the road's not up to the standards? Mr. Robelart's built on it, and Mr. Livingston built on it, and he's not even hooked up to the municipal sewers. He's on a septic system. And there's also now, there's eight other taxpayers that front on to Jalen Crescent. And the road's my responsibility? I just don't understand. The property taxes that I pay for this, this marina down here are outrageous, and I have to maintain Jalen Crescent as well?
Yeah. I think that'd be the answer that I'm looking for, that I think Counselor Martin's looking for. Like, you know, I was there between 94 and 2000. There's an 18-year gap before I came back. I'm sure there's new agreements in place, and I think that's what Mr. Godby will be checking the files to, to see if there's other new agreements that superseded the ones that I dealt with at, at the time and the OMB dealt with and the original applicant dealt with. So we'll put it out and make that all part of the planner's final report when we have the details. And you know, you offer legitimate questions, and other people offer legitimate complaints, but somewhere in the middle usually is the truth. Counselor Martin, you have a comment on that?
No, I, that's, that's a very valid point. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Counselor Columbus?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Godby's report with respect to the road reconstruction or whatever's happening there, can he also just put a short paragraph with respect to the municipal utilities as to where that's actually at? I believe they're hooked pretty well to the, to the building we're talking about, but if he could just make a clarifying statement in that same report would help.
Mr. Chair? Now, did you get that, Mr. Godby, or was Mike skipping in and out on yours as well?
To you, Mr. Chair, I, I got caught all that. So we got some notes here, and Tricia and I will touch base and talk with operations staff as well and bring forth the info.
Any other questions for the applicant, the agent, the planners, or other staffs?
Yeah, I have a couple of points in, in response to the, to the neighbors, Mr. Hitchens' Yeah, I have a couple of points in, in response to the, to the neighbors, Mr. Hitchon's comments.
Yeah, we always allow the applicant's agent a little bit of a rebuttal at the end.
Yeah, get the last word in, but what I would say to council is there, notwithstanding what Mr. Hitchon had said, there, there have been also already changes relative to the service and the ability to, to connect to the services. My understanding, there was also changes to the Conservation Authority floodlines that actually make the potential for the lots that are on the opposite the marina on the south side of the road potentially able to be developed. And that being the case, I think that a council could then clearly state that in order for new development to occur. And much as I know that Mr. Robillard did provide money to the county towards upgrading of the roads and the services. The county could simply state that development is to occur, then agreement with the owner or owners should include, and that can deal with the sewer, the water and the upgrade of the road to whatever standard council in the county deemed reasonable. For years, those, I think, two or three lots on the south side of, of the Crescent were basically undevelopable. My understanding is that the floodlines have actually changed there and there is a potential for them now, now to be developed. And I would agree with, with my client that the benefiting party should pay equally towards or pay their share, their fair share of the cost. And I do agree with, with county council in terms of, of ensuring that, that that services are provided and that people pay their, their share. That's basically my final, my final two cents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. Now Kevin, I see your hand up. Am I doing something wrong? Are you going to wrap my knuckles for or?
Through you, Tiffany Mayer, no wrapping up knuckles. I just, we're trying to get a connection with Mr. Munce. He's going to be calling in on my phone, but I just need a few moments' time in order to make that happen. And I'd appreciate it if we could give him the opportunity to speak as well.
Would you suggest that we recess for five minutes for you to make those arrangements? Counselor Martin?
Sorry, before you recess, I, I could actually maybe kill some time and pose another question to our staff. Thank you.
We saw that coming.
I'm full of them. Okay, O M B rulings and deciding factors, are they not considered law or does council have the ability to change that and waive that? Does council have the ability to say, although an agreement said this, we now deem it as such? What, what is the best plan of practice there?
Thank you through the chair. I believe Paula Buttis might be on this call and she might be able to provide a better answer than I. Paula's there?
I am, I am here. Just to clarify through the chair to Counselor Martin, what you're asking is whether with an existing Ontario municipal board decision, what is, what is the county's right or anyone's right to bring a new application? Is that correct? Have I understood your question?
Uh, no, sorry, Paula sprung that one on you. Uh, my question is if there is a decision or a ruling from the O M B, in this case, it was that the landowners would maintain an unmaintained road. Does the municipality of the day have the ability to overturn that or change the decision, the terms of reference or not?
I'm sorry, I haven't actually read the decision. So I'm, to, to properly answer that question, I would want to know the full context. So I, I don't feel comfortable at this point giving you that answer, but I'm happy to read the decision and get back to you.
Yep, no problem.
As a more general comment, you know, Ontario municipal board decisions live in a point in time. And if the application is a different kind of application, it may well be that that decision is somehow superseded by whatever's come next or the planning permissions sought through it. So it, there probably is flexibility, I guess is what I'm getting at, at the end of the day, depending on what's asked for.
Kevin, you have Mr. Munce on the line then?
Uh, yes, I have Mr. Munce on the line. Gary, you're free to go ahead. Please let me know if you can, someone from the committee, if they can hear this, okay? Yep. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to address council on the Van Halter Dover crack marine file. Given the first time that it's been addressed, I municipal council since about 1991. And given that there is a significant file of that has not been provided to council, documentation for you to have to do your task. And given that I am very conversant with these I respectfully ask for your indulgence for an additional five minutes, could it be necessary? Because of the excessiveness of information that you do not have.
Is council hearing this, okay?
Will we give Mr. Munce a little leeway on the five minute ruling? If so, everybody raise your hand who's willing to do that. One, two. It looks like, yeah, we'll give you a little bit of leeway on the five minute rule, Gary.
Thank you very much. Though the history of the Van Halter municipal government interface, no council can properly address the matter before you. It is all connected. It's a tragic tale of broken laws and broken promises by the landowner. One can only wonder why this council has not been provided with the full documentation. Shortly after Mr. Van Halter acquired the subject property, he started using it to build and repair large sail boats. This work was clearly industrial marine work, properly requiring a marine industrial designation. This work clearly was not a typical marine. As a result, 100% of the surrounding property owners complaining about the continual dirt, dust and noise came to Nanticoke council. As a result, Mr. Van Halter applied to Nanticoke for variance from the existing provisions. This all ended in Mr. Van Halter losing at the local government level, so he appealed to the Ontario municipal board. Today, it would appear that over, over time, all of the conditions stated by the O M B have been violated over and over again. Plus building and illegal apartments. Let me refer to the O M B boards that apply on this, to this Well, Mr. Van Halter was allowed to proceed with putting up a building, the following conditions. Number one, the applicant must enter into an agreement with the municipality and the applying landowner on the maintenance of unassumed streets including grading, gravel, surfacing, dust control, snowfalling. The said agreement is to run and therefore is registered on title. Number two, the location and design is to be done to the satisfaction of the building permit as Number three, the repair of a building of commercial vessels is prohibited. Number four. Next, the repair shop is used for repairs only and not for the building of boats. No major recenter work is to be done outside the repair shop. For greater clarity, the board wishes is to be clearly understood that a break in without leave of the board will result in the termination of the variance. And then plus with a contract, which nobody at Norfolk, or Norfolk County seems to be under.
If I could just interrupt for a second, Mr. Munce. Council has been provided with copies of those, the O M B ruling and the other applications.
Um, what Chair Van Passen is trying to say is they have been provided with a copy of the O M B paperwork?
Yeah, the O M B and the
flow from it.
And the contract that flows from it, that, do you have that as well?
We didn't get that one. We did get the O M B chairman's ruling, so.
Well, at some point you've got to look at it because that over time, all of the conditions have been violated over and over. Plus the building of the illegal apartment. Part of the agreement included a contract between the owners of the marina and the municipality quoting, it's the name of the land. And in my experience, over many, many years, everybody's people look and doesn't know anything. But no one in the workforce has ever made the chance to find it. It is registered on title. It runs with the land. I've spoken about a thousand times. I think he's had his glitz sometimes. But maybe that was the old regime. I understand there's been lots of changes and I'm hopeful. If I were a cynical person, I might suggest that the county treasury and that the citizens of Norfolk are clearer for the experience. Notwithstanding the clarity of the contract. It would appear for an insensible reason that Jalen Crescent is a significant county expenditure solely to the benefit of the property owners. Instead of such expenditure falling to the developers with any other development. Jalen isn't an open road allowance, not a municipal street. Attempts to get information regarding its implementation have been deliberately blocked by senior county staff in the past. Council has not been provided with, with and you have to ask why. You cannot be expected to do your job without it. Now, Mr. Van Halter is a game for you, wanting to reside within the industrial building located on a floodplain. I do not believe Mr. Van Halter's prior report provides you with his previous problem of illegal occupation of the so-called apartment. Nothing about this fifteen years ago in the past, that they have illegally lived and the problems exist. The county constant in all of this is, the only constant in all of this, I'm sorry, the only constant in all of this. While the rest of us municipal taxpayers depend upon our residents, not the Van Haltern. No building permit has ever been issued for an apartment. For, for respecting apartments, therefore, none has been issued. No inspections have been done to ensure compliance with building code and for safety for occupants of One might wonder, in light of the attitude and actions in the past in this regard, that not forbid a future possible occupancy, illegal occupancy might result in legal action against the municipality, given their failure if they rent this apartment, as they've been allowed in illegal apartments remain. Something to think of or might be the municipal council. Notwithstanding the foredoing, it took a ridiculously long time for Mr. Van Halter to vacate the apartment once his previous request was denied by a previous Norfolk council. I mentioned Jalen Crescent, while not technically part of the Van Halter application for you to be nevertheless is intimately linked to the apartment. Over the years, it has been impossible to get a clear understanding of what municipal funds have been spent on the full unopened road allowance, closed roads and the installation of municipal facilities. The question really is, will there be a single fee or a single minute of municipal labor being in bridle conditions of Jalen Crescent? And it's not to be proven as any other development. The county would not be sending in these measures with the exception of enforcing the contract in reference to the contract from the municipal board hearing. And registered on title to the property, the registry office. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and the opportunity to sit shed some light on the subject that appears complicated. There is a clear prohibition about having a residential dwelling on a floodplain. Since the days of Hurricane Hazel. And while I accept that not many of us are alive now that can remember that. It was a devastating hurricane in Ontario and it caused the losses of much life in the late sixties. Only pre-existing residential buildings are allowed on a floodplain. You must not reward people who will not and do not comply with legal orders of the county. No matter how many times they come back to the county, hopefully and need this business of living in that building. I'd like to have a dollar for every minute, every minute of government. And in the past, it's come to the table, proven. No, you may not live on this floodplain. Hopefully, someone in authority will look into water and sewer matters and Jalen Crescent. Some work is already in evidence, but appears to lack the required approval. Is there a pattern here? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I'm rambling on possibly. Done and settled, whatever you want. But like a bad cold, it just keeps coming back. I don't know how many times council has to say. Well, each council will have its own vote. I cannot imagine anyone, any person of conscience would allow the existence of this apartment. I'm reminded of a poor family west of Delhi who were thrown out of their house. Went through no fault of their own, repair work had been done on the house and the building permit not properly exercised. And they were literally ousted out with hardly any notice.
Now, Mr. Munce, the committee's been rather generous with its time allotment. So is there like a summary of 30 seconds that you'd want to throw in or?
Yes, I have, I have a great hope that the municipal council will act as as the evidence only shows they can act. I cannot imagine an excuse or a reason that someone would be allowed to continue to live in this illegally constructed, illegally lived in, hard to evict out of apartment. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. And I, I will say with technology being what it is, sometimes it doesn't work perfectly. And there was a few times that the connection was garbled. So would it be possible that you could send a written version of your comments to the clerk? And then the clerk can circulate it to, to the committee to make sure that we heard the facts and figures. Because I know you're rather meticulous with your numbers, so. Are there any questions to the deputation?
I hope the next time we have the speak, we can do it in person.
I would appreciate that as well. And I'm sure every member of council is looking forward to that day, so.
Thank you.
Any questions from committee for the deputation?
Goodbye.
Oh, do you mind staying on?
Counselor Martin?
Nope, nope, he's good to go. Not a question. I was going to echo the same thing. There's a couple of notes that I missed. So I think something in writing would be helpful. That was, that was all. Thanks.
And I'll go back to Mr. Rowe. Was any new comments brought up by the latest deputation that you'd like to clarify?
Now, Mr. No, Mr. Muntz is pretty hard to follow, so I think we should just leave it as is. Thank you for your your attention to this application.
And I think that, and I think we will, like staff have some new avenues, staff will dig up some of the details that the deputations have brought forward. We'll get comments from our solicitor on the rules and regs about the O M B and staff will have a lot of things to look at when they bring before they bring back a final report. So councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You summarized it perfectly. You know, similarly to the last file, I'm not interested in coming in, sorry, coming in between progressing and development forward or not. I will specifically be looking on the next report for what has changed and you know, reasons why the county can work with the file as opposed to against it. So specifically looking for that information from Paula concerning the O M B decision, looking for the details on Jalen Crescent and some of the other concerns that were listed from that O M B ruling. So looking for some reasons on how the county can make this happen in that next report from staff. Thanks.
Yeah, I think there's a good opportunity for both sides of the equation to right some wrongs from the past and and, no, let's get it done right and finalized for once rather than leaving too many muddy waters behind us. Any other comments from the committee, questions? If there are none, does someone wish to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative? Moving the staff recommendation, councillor Martin? Seconder, councillor Taylor, all in favor? That is carried. Thanks, everyone. That was a great way to end the day. We did not do the the public announcements at the Board of Health. Mayor Trott asked if we, if anybody had any for, we could put them in at this meeting. Kevin, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Anybody have any public announcements? I do have one. I read yesterday that the Ontario or the Canadian fruit and vegetable industry named its top four under 40 young farmers, two of which, Mr. Dooney and Ms. Judd are Norfolk County residents. So if two of the best young farmers in the whole country are coming out of Norfolk County, it's got to say something about what we do around here. So maybe we should send, have the mayor send a little congratulatory letter to them on behalf of the councils. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Michele, Councillor Columbus and everyone else at the same time, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everyone. Great meeting. Maybe next time you'll have the first stringers back.
Thank you for chairing.
Good night, everyone.